Is, will, will not go over that?
Well, what will hap- I, there's only about fifty some thousand dollars difference. So, what you probably wanna look at in your budget is maybe, uh, reducing. You just wanna stay within that two hundred thousand, uh, amount. I would say you probably have to reduce maybe run the line items in twenty sixteen budget, which if you look at what we spent as of right now, as of June thirtieth winters. We probably could make, it looks like in like her and then your federal taxes and some of those other ones. You've got a couple of amounts that you could probably little get, which is gonna be, gonna be close. It's like fifty seven thousand is what the difference was between. But you can add that thousand dollars back for however many people. Fifty seven thousand is what the difference was. So, we need to-
Fifty seven please for twenty years?
No, that was the difference between the map that was advertised.
You still have Google list there?
Well, I'm, I'm confused because, you know, I, this, this, this expect to, I-
You're right.
And the two hundred thousand was gonna make, make the change. And now she's telling me that we have to make some changes in line items. So, yeah, that's why I'm, it's hard for me to keep up.
We might wanna make twenty sixteen.
Well, it's, we're gonna have to reduce some other line items, so apparently.
You, after looking at the table, you might have some reasons.
It's a lot. There's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a simple number.
What did you say we advertised?
Um, six point three two five.
Six point three two five.
Six point, six point three two five.
Yeah, six point two. And I get it, yeah. How do we get, okay.
You got a hundred thousand here.
No, not, no.
You're still short a hundred and forty one.
Well, maybe we'll put a hundred thousand in there, about two hundred.
No, no, I mean, on it, that's, it was just, that's what we need to start.
And building up that fund again is, is the whole thing to do. So, are we gonna go and do twenty fifteen five ordinance with the totals? This one has, in the salaries, has the possible change in twenty year employee.
Has that added to the expense?
And all the overtime is in the salaries? Or not overtime, but I mean, longevity?
Yes, in salaries. H and H little department salaries.
Yeah. What do we advertise for the total budget or you can every? Maybe that's where. So, did, I've got, oh, somebody saw something. In the, in what was budgeted in the Honda fire account for health insurance? You have sixty eight thousand.
It should be like seventy two.
Well, it's, say it's sixty eight.
It should do seventy two.
I believe seventy two, alright. But what you're showing here in the Honda funding for the twenty fifteen is a hundred forty four thousand.
Six people, two thousand dollars.
And so, I, so that's seventy two. I, I agree with you. But what's showing here on this figure right here for twenty fifteen is a hundred forty four.
Right, shouldn't that be with the, that's half the year. That's, that's just, that's for the whole year.
But this is for the whole year. Seventy two is for the whole year. Seventy two is half of one hundred forty four.
Twelve times twelve down forty four, isn't that?
Six people, two thousand and one.
Twelve times twelve.
Wow, six people, two thousand and one.
Twelve thousand, twelve times twelve.
That's all, that's all by seventy.
But then why does this say sixty eight or, or seventy two?
Because we don't have six people that have the maximum amount insurance, but that's what Honda is agreeing to pay. So, we put that money in there.
But they're not gonna pay it unless we, unless we have-
Well, it's part of what, it's a whole different contract.
So, they're paying it anyway.
Right.
But you're just budgeting this.
Right.
Alright, but we're budgeting a hundred and fifty next year.
Right, 'cause it needs to be, our, it'll be a little bit less to get a hundred forty. What they've been doing in the past, they've been transferring. I don't know why, but that's why we fixed it for, I think that was, is a short amount.
That's what it says.
At least it, it needed to be like a hundred forty four amount, so it could be a hundred forty four. But it's Honda, so it still goes back. It reverts in Honda, but it's burdened to the general fund or anything like that, based on Honda. So, I don't think the hundred forty four would come out of Honda, but then go over into health insurance fund to help offset. So, there is some flexibility there to help offset claims and things like that. A little bit from the Honda side, not fast enough.
So, the, the one point six that's budgeted doesn't include that amount.
He means doesn't.
If we got, we budgeted one point six.
Those people are still within the amount of money that we spend for insurance, but that's not, the, the Honda fund actually, that money gets directly deposited in the health care fund. It does not touch the general fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense, Jamie?
Well, I guess when I'm, I'm just asking for clarification. So, we, we budgeted one point six for the health insurance fund. Then that, a hundred and fifty thousand that's budgeted for two thousand and sixteen is in addition to that, right?
Yeah, so if you look at what happened in, we'll just go back to fourteen, which is, but anyway, if we look at fourteen and you see that we, we budgeted a million and then we received approximately six hundred and six from water, waste water, and then approximately a hundred forty four from, you see that on there?
Yeah, that's what, okay.
Does that make sense now?
That, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
So, it's, actually, it's a little bit more. So, like you said, the one point six that we're technically saying we're budgeting, we really can add a hundred forty four passing to that.
Well, we're only budgeting a million.
Right, we are. Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
If we take that additional, I don't know, fifty nine thousand between what we have, what we advertised and what we, we came in at, let's say we take fifty of that, we're gonna be pretty close to adding that one too.
Right. If we, yeah, if we, for the max cost of the counter.
Yeah, so we had, we're gonna add fifty thousand instead of, instead of one million, we're gonna add one million and fifty thousand.
Well, 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 if we add the fifty thousand and then you add the, the higher, or the-
Well, with the Honda, but we're not adding anything. It's just going into the fund.
But that'll put us at a rise out of forty eight, which is where they recommend it.
So, on the twenty fifteen dash five, were there any other, I mean, you can see that that's still just salary increases in the red. Is there anything else? That you want to equal back over what the amounts were or like? Yeah, but we think because everybody gets longevity, they have different amount of years, we figure everybody up individually. So, like for instance, if someone at the, uh, fire department is making thirty seven, three, four, five, and they get twenty percent longevity, that equals seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, let's just say they get one of the higher rank pays, that's another forty three hundred dollars. We'll just say thirty three hundred dollars, 'cause that one, forty three hundred dollars includes the week buyout, so we'll just take that out to thirty three hundred dollars. So, it's gonna be. Yeah. Like with the buyout, they would make nine forty four fifty a week without the buyout. They're gonna be more around the eight ninety, where you just divide that into fifty. Yeah, like a sixteen seventeen person, that's about eight seventy five would equal, uh, rank pays and things like that. So, yes, man, if you question, I'll take that thousand dollars, keep this back in there. We'll put buyout money back in those line, but then it should bring count to the show up here. Fire, please.
Where were they in, where were they in the council?
Well, they're not. That's what I mean, that, those, those buyout dollars will show back up in their individual budgets, like.
But I thought they were in there already.
They are, but if we decided that we wanna look at that for future, do we wanna leave them in or do we wanna take them out? We're gonna take a thousand dollars.
I think we, if we pass the budget with them in, it doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right, you don't have to do it, but we'll have to implement some type, type of discussion once we put them. Even like the salary ordinance right now has the, has the weekday pays in them, so, uh, so we might wanna take a look at that before we adopt the salary ordinance. You could adopt for twenty fifteen dash five the way it is.
Right, that's where the buyouts in.
Right, with the buyouts in it as a total on the budget, but you're gonna wanna have, you're gonna wanna amend.
I would propose that we adopt twenty fifteen dash five with it in there.
With it.
And then the salary ordinance, we adopt it without it in there, and then if we decide to make that change, we're drawn.
Then you can amend your salary ordinance. Right. Okay, so we'll leave those in there. Yeah, because you're gonna be able to adopt a little bit higher rate anyway with the, and then we're gonna, they'll be pretty much even, so we're gonna leave those in there. So, I will amend twenty fifteen dash five to leave those rent pays in. And then in the salary ordinance, we'll reduce. The buyout. And then I'll get you guys a few copies.
So, buyout is actually, it's not in here in a specific way, it's just in here in the, in the, all the different pay.
Right, well, because, and we don't have a worded in salary ordinance that would take them out. But from a dollar standpoint, it's, I'll double check it, but we may not need to do any adjustments on that since it's a, uh, like, look at, I don't know if I brought my copy. Look at your, like your home lease, which you got, where it's got like, it doesn't, I think their base pays are listed in there, and then the ranks, ranks are listed individually. Did that, um, on the buyout or not?
No, I don't see it here.
Probably because it's-
Oh, yeah, it is. There it is. I see it now. Yeah.
Well, and that's, and we would've had to, for it to be in the salary ordinance, we're gonna have to amend the policy anyway. So, if we don't amend the policy, then we'll take, we'd have to take it out of the salary ordinance. So, I will take it out of the salary ordinance, but the, the dollar figure in the overall set by the general policy, thank you. But I'll pick the, uh, four notices, 'cause we won't be able to adopt that salary ordinance unless we're gonna change the policy. So, we'll, we'll make that. Does that make sense to you there? So, the other increases.
Well, that's what we, so I can take to see the, where's it?
When we, when we were doing some adjustments on dispatchers, things like that, it kind of showed up as a negative. This is what we're increasing, is we're gonna, I'll get you guys all fresh copies of that.
So, what, what do we expect to pass this energy?
Yeah, we need to pass it in October. So, if we weren't sure about something on their totals, we would've probably had to try to meet again. But if you wanna go with your totals that are listed here on this twenty fifteen dash five, then you should be fine. 'Cause that, that amount's gonna be a little bit less than what you advertised, so when it's sent to the L G M. But we'll make the adjustments that we discussed with the health insurance. We're, well, with, with what we've requested, we already know that it's within the growth quotient, that the L G M will let you increase your budget each year, so we're not trying to exceed that. So, that's, we're kinda playing it safe, so to speak, so.
But they're still- Are we gonna, are we gonna receive, are we gonna take that?
And that's the other question we've done.
Right.
That's the thing, 'cause they may come back and reduce it.
Right, but they're looking at what you received as of two thirtieth and what you proposed that you will see. Yeah, they'll ask for one more set of reports at the end of the year when they're working the budget.
And get her a set two day report.
So, if we begin to reduce them, they're gonna get set.
Counsel, have any more questions or do you want to help over at?
Counsel, if you don't have anything more, uh, so we standing on what had been proposed on all the salary for the budget. If that's the case, we have a whole lot of city employees here. I, uh, I don't want to be the same thing over and over, but if you hear someone who wants to stand up and speak and address your issues, I appreciate it. Would you like to, like them to the audience right now? Thank you, Wayne.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for your hard work on the budget. I mean, as you can tell, it's tedious, sometimes tenuous, but, um, thank you for, for, for the, your work for the city. You know, as, we're here because, you know, we're getting, have concerns. One of our concerns, you asked tonight about the, the vacation, the fifth week vacation, because we were hearing, you know, two different sides. One time deal, we're gonna get it, so, uh, that was addressed and, and, uh, I think, you know, as a fire department, we don't have an issue with getting our five weeks in. So, I think, you know, guys would like to keep that fifth week. I think if you, if you talk to the guys twenty years on, they would like to keep that fifth week. But, um, you know, I understand, maybe some other departments can't get their time in, and maybe that's a, the department head, you know, managing their department better. I don't know what the issue is. But, um, you know, as far as the, um, insurance, and I, I hear you discussing about the health insurance. And, uh, believe me, I, I, if you don't have the money, you can't pay. I understand. If you don't have the revenue, you can't, you can't come up with it. But, um, many years, and I'll address Jamie and Terry and Blake, because you guys are fairly good city councilmen, which I know Glenn and the mayor have heard this before, but for many years, I've been here twenty-three years, we have been told, you're not gonna get much of the raise, but you're gonna get to keep your health insurance. And that was our, that was basically our raise for the year, um, was, yes, well, well, we, you may get a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars or whatever, but, but you get to keep your health insurance. And, and actually, that, that health insurance is huge for all of us. To be able to keep our health insurance is, is extremely important. And you heard just two, three weeks ago, when, when Chief Shance and Chief Bridges came up and gave you, um, some, salaries of other departments around our area. And, and you can tell that we are one of the lowest in our area as far as salaries, but we get that made up with keeping our health insurance. And I get it. It makes sense. It's a, it's a compensation. That health insurance is huge for us. Our salaries maybe have not kept up with these surrounding departments, but we've been able to keep our health insurance and get it paid for. So, we, that, that draws us closer. Does that make sense? So, you know, then when you start saying, maybe making us pay for our health insurance and not get a raise or not, you know, then, then we're, we get off. So, that's where I think as a, um, city employees, we're, we're concerned, that, um, we, we get, we fall behind even more if we have to start paying for our health insurance. So, but I get it, you don't, if you don't have the money, what do you do? So, um, those are two concerns, huge concerns for us. I think that, uh, the twenty year employees, and I can speak for myself, I think, I hope you value our commitment to the city for that long. We have several police officers that have been, just been on for a few years and have left. And now we've got three firefighters, um, that are leaving this year or have left this year. And we've got two or three firefighters that are actually looking for other jobs, um, putting applications into other places. So, um, you know, they're looking at salaries, they're looking at all these benefits. And I think if, the more that we don't keep up, we're gonna keep losing guys. So, um, we value you. We appreciate what you do for us, but we hope you appreciate what we do for you. We, we hope that's reciprocal. So, um, thank you for your hard work. I, it is very much appreciated. I don't envy you sitting here and trying to tackle all this stuff, but we just hope that you appreciate us too in the same manner.
Brian, we understand your concerns a hundred percent, and I'm sure that it's, it's this council's goal and is mine as well, to never give you a raise and take more money out of your pocket to help pay for the insurance. That'd be the last thing we'd ever want to do, and we would do everything we can to keep, to ever do that. Now, one of your firemen who just left, go to Seymour?
Yeah.
I don't know if they still are or not, if they were paying for their health, paying for their health insurance with edit money to make ends meet with Seymour. That's a fact. So, a lot of municipalities, a lot of cities are in lot worse shape in Greensburg, Indiana. And according to financial shape, it's not as bad as what you, uh, you read.
Well, like you said, when you read the newspaper, it makes you concerned.
It's terrible. It's terrible. It looks like we are not using care papers of taxpayers' money.
Yeah, that, that young gentleman just went to Seymour, I think his salary's twelve thousand dollars more than us.
Well, what, how much, like you said.
Well, I don't know what he pays for his health insurance.
Right, right.
And so, that's where, it does help us offset. So, I mean, it's a value to us to be able to keep our health insurance and-
I think, um, this gentleman says right here, said that he got an increase and, and got a better job. Been never checked on the insurance, and I think he pays two hundred and seventy dollars a month now on his insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that, but we're gonna try to make it work as best we can. And, you know, we always want to see our, our people grow and prosper and be able to keep up with cost of living and things. But we will do everything that we can to keep, give you increases, not take your insurance away. Or make you pay into it. It could come down to getting increases and paying into itself. Wouldn't want you to go to the negative. That'd be the worst thing in the world.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has there ever been a sit down with an explanation of benefits with each department, this department head sit down or?
We've, we've done it in the past. We haven't done it recently, but we've, we've had a, um, an actual insurance agent that, from the city, came down and, and explained that, um, here's your salary, here's your benefits, this is what your total compensation package is.
Sure.
Yes, we have.
How long ago was that been?
Uh, it's been a couple of years, maybe, longer.
It's been at least-
It's been, it's been a while.
Would that be, would that help with the, 'cause we've taken on, as a business owner, tremendous increase in insurance. It's a secret. I mean, everybody in this room knows that insurance piece is difficult, but would that help each individual understand what is actually being paid for? Would that go along?
Yes, I think it would, but I think the concern that he didn't throw directly at you is, is if you were to say, make us pay for our insurance per, per period or per month or whatever, are you gonna put that on our base? So, our basis increase where we're not, like you said, not going negative, but that does help us in the long run where that basis is brought up.
And there's a lot of things that can be looked at. For example, the young guys are maybe not married.
Right.
You know, that, uh, maybe if them boys do pay into it, it helps them come up with plans to choose from.
Like, I think, I think call them if you want to.
And he has addressed that, that he opened, I mean, but not everybody has addressed it much else.
Sure.
He has got those numbers.
Can we make a payment? Or? You know, if each individual employee, regardless of how long it's been, what is the cost? And what's the benefit?
All four, transparency and showing that the cost actually is what the benefits are.
I mean, even a, even a, you know, hypothetically speaking, you know, people, shoot me for this, maybe, I don't know. But what if, what if you, if you gave, gave everybody a-
Insurance bonus.
Gave everybody a, a, a twelve thousand dollar raise.
Insurance bonus.
And say, pay for your own insurance. If the insurance cost is eighteen thousand dollars a year, you're saving six thousand dollars per employee. That's a hundred and twenty employees, that's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You're, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just saying hypothetically speaking.
Same with quarter million dollars.
I don't know. I'm, I, I mean, some people would say, no, you can't do that. I don't know. I'm just, there's, when you do an insurance workshop, there's gotta be ways of, of, I don't know.
Well, there are two, how you, what you call it, where you put the money, there for the expense of the insurance. So, we're, we're looking at several different things to help cut costs and make it feasible for the employees as well. And you will be kept up. It's not gonna be something that's gonna happen overnight. There's nothing gonna surprise you with.
Yeah. I, I'll just make the comment, Brian, one, I think every person here really do appreciate every one of the city employees we have. And we're trying to do the best to make sure that, one, we give you what we can, but also at the same time, you gotta have the money to pay the bills.
I, I understand that. I do understand.
And I'm probably one of them that has said something about it more than some of the others, just, just looking at it. Just 'cause we're talking about it doesn't mean it's something we're doing, but I think, you know, things don't change. We don't start finding a way to put more money in that health insurance account. If you had that, there's gonna have to be a way to put that money in there, and that may have to come to that. I don't think, you know, we're able to do it with this budget. I, we're not gonna have to do that, I don't believe.
Did you understand where we're coming from?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Don't make us pay for insurance, not give us, and give us a cut pay as well, not give us an increase in pay. With your break even, you understand that that's what it has to be, but we'll consider everything, I promise. Anyone else in the audience? Nice to be here. Randy?
And kind of what Brian was saying on increasing the salary, you know, even if we pay for the insurance and stuff on that, you know, it adds to our base, and a lot of our pensions is based on that base pay.
Not a lot of it, it is.
It is. So, you know, for retirement purposes, that really helps a guy. And that's, and some of that's when these other guys are leaving, they're seeing that big, 'cause when they retire, they may get fifteen thousand dollars more a year in their pension benefit package compared to what we got and stuff. So, you know, if that can slowly get increased, whether, like Brian said, offset it with pure increase and we pay for insurance that way, you know, that might work.
And we understand that as well. Your longevity is, as bad a good a plan as there is. And we understand that as well, your longevity is as, as bad a good a plan as there is, but your base pay's not.
Right.
You know, so if there's some way to even that out, reduce the longevity, increase the base salary, that's something we'll look at.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it, I mean, like I said, Brian said, you guys work hard at it, and that makes a big difference.
There's changes that has to be made.
Right.
It has to be made for the city and for the employees.
If you, and I, I think Jamie, you may have mentioned, and I'm gonna brad him, I'm gonna throw you on the bus, but you mentioned something to brad about, you weren't sure exactly how our pension works or if the longevity was, I think you maybe said something to me about it.
I knew it was based on your, your base.
But I'm, I'm the pension secretary, if you guys are interested, I can tell you how our pension works and how the longevity and the base pay work together to, to make our pension up. I mean, if you're not clear how that all works, I mean, I can, I'd love to sit down.
It's all of your, uh, base pay and part of your longevity.
No, all of our longevity, all of our longevity.
Longevity goes towards the base.
Yes. Our base pay and longevity make up our pension base, and then that gets divided out by percentage by how long you've been there. But I, I would love to sit down with you and go over that, if you're confused about how that, our pension actually works.
I got a question, is the insurance the same for every city employee, doesn't matter if it's police, fire, law, or sewer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so therefore, if it come down to that, then base rate, your increase in pay would have to go straight across the board to make up for the difference, correct?
Yes, sir. It, it's all a gamble, it's averaged out.
I'm just saying, because, you know, if you give fire, police, a ten percent, you know, that's not hurting as bad. If you start paying for insurance, is you give us a two percent, you see what I'm saying, that's a big gap.
Right, because it's all the same.
So, you're gonna have to go, we all go up, or we all stay, I was just checking, I'm sure it was, but just wanted that out there.
A lot of problems when you make changes.
Mayor, if I could add something?
Sir.
Uh, Randy, how many applications do we have for firefighter?
Eight, and they've closed up today.
Eight.
That's all we got.
Eight applications returned for a position. What did we have, the last process?
I've been doing the hiring process for the last seventeen years, every year we had that minimum, about sixteen to seventeen, um, applications returned, and about fifty picked up. This year, we had less than forty picked up, and only.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
We had twenty-eight picked up and only eight returned.
In our stance, what do we do?
I don't know.
We can only raise the budget so much.
I, I get it.
And last this be the third year, we really haven't raised operating expenses, all salaries and insurance, whether it be workman's comp or health insurance.
And, and I think maybe something we could look at, maybe in the next cycle, is maybe we look at longevity towards the base, bring the base up, take some of the longevity and add it to the base to get people to come in. We're not losing the ten-year-plus people, we're losing the four, five, six, and seven-year people with that amount of service, and, uh, that's, that's where we're really leading the worst. So maybe we look at bringing the base up at some point in time, getting rid of, of longevity up to ten years, get the base up equal to what that longevity would have been, it doesn't, wouldn't affect the pension, because it's already going on the pension base. So that might be a way to attract more people, I think, and maybe that's, that's an option.
That's an increase in your base salary, which is more from the budget, even for a new employee.
I understand, but I, I think one of the things we've gotta look at is, what are we gonna do the next time if we don't get any applications?
Just to address that, Mike, that's one of the things that we're gonna address, I think, with the personnel committee, and we talked about the fifth week, that the longevity's gotta be included in there, those kind of things, so.
You know, fire department, you want to cut car trucks or operating equipment, police department, you wanna cut more personnel and maintain your IT network and your new convenience that you use to keep officers safe and the public safe. Uh, do we wanna use less salt and sand and dump trucks and plows, no plows in the wintertime? Uh, we want to make less garbage runs, uh, to pick up people's trash, where do we cut? But if we wanna give more, we have to cut more, or we have to be, work smarter, be more thrifty. So, I don't know, we're, we're open for suggestions. We're open for suggestions, how to cut costs and be able to function better and, and you folks prosper a little more than the yard as far as salaries. We want it good for you, we want it good for the city, we want to be able to be within our budget and be able to get enough funds to buy our products that we need for the city to function every year, and you to pay your bills and support your families. That's what we want, and if you would like to enter suggestions, feel free anytime, give me a call, come see me. We'd be glad to hear from you, you know, uh, sometimes you can't see the trees because of the forest, and any help that you'd like to get is more willing to listen. Anything else? Counsel? Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight and, and experiencing how we have to deal with things, and we do take it serious. You can see that, we do take it serious, and we'll do the best we can. So here, anything else, I gotta take a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
On the move, in the adjournment.